Good afternoon. I will call to order the April 24th meeting of the Minneapolis City Planning Commission. My name is Matt Brown. I serve as President of the Commission. I am joined today by Commissioners Gagnon, Gronzer, Magrino, Slacks, Wheezy, Breland, and Rockwell. Our first item of business is to approve the actions from the April 10th meeting. They have a motion to approve those actions. We have a motion and a second all in favor. And that motion carries. Our next item of business is to approve the agenda. You can find hard copies of the agenda in the hallway. We'll determine which items we will discuss, which will be continued, and which will be considered on consent. So, starting at the top of the agenda. Item one is the HCMC Ambulatory Outpatient Specialty Center signage at 801 through 829 Park Avenue, 715 through 721 South 8th Street, and 816 Chicago Avenue. That's a variance related to signs. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item one? See, no one will put that on consent. Item two is at 1721 Como Avenue Southeast. Several applications for a new mixed-use building there. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item two? See, no one. We'll put item two on consent. Item three is 1003rd at 1,000 North 3rd Street. Several applications for an office building there. We will continue item three to the May 22nd meeting at the request of the applicant. So if there's anyone here for that, we will consider it on May 22nd. Item four is the Kappa Sigma Fraternity at 1,005th Street Southeast. Several applications for a fraternity house. There is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item four? See, no one. We'll put item four on consent. Item five is Nordic House at 729 Washington Avenue North, 701 through 729 and 1/2 Washington Avenue North, 722 through 728 North 3rd Street, 8425 and 1/2 8th Avenue North, and 250 and 1/2 7th Avenue North. Several applications for an office building and residential and parking structure. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item five? See, no one will put item five on consent. And finally, item six is the Malcolm Yards Comprehensive Plan Amendment at 518 Malcolm Avenue Southeast, 501 Malcolm Avenue Southeast, 445 Malcolm Avenue Southeast, 501 30th Avenue Southeast, 419 29th Avenue Southeast, and 504 29th Avenue Southeast. We will discuss item six. That's a comprehensive plan amendment, so if you are wishing to speak on that, we will discuss that in a moment. So, our agenda as amended is as follows. Items one, two, four, and five will be on consent. We will discuss item six, and item three will be continued to May 22nd. May have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. We have a motion and a second all in favor. And that motion carries. Our next item in business is to consider the Committee of the Whole consent agenda. And Vice President Slacks, do you have an update?
Thank you, President Brown. At the April 13, 2017 Committee of the Whole, we reviewed and considered four items. The first is a modifications number three to the consolidated redevelopment tax increment finance district plan. Item number two was a land acquisition at 2822 Emerson Avenue North. Item three was a land acquisition at 3544 34th Avenue South. And item four was a location and design review for the property and evidence warehouse. Based on the presentations, the recommended motion from the Planning Commission was to approve the staff report that each of those items was consistent with the Minneapolis Plan for Sustainable Growth.
All right. We'll take that as a motion to find those items consistent with the comprehensive plan. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor. And that motion carries. Next, may I have a motion to continue item three to the May 22nd meeting? We have a motion and a second. All in favor. And that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to the public hearing portion of the meeting. And at this time, I'll open the public hearing for the items on the consent agenda. Again, that is items one, two, four, and five. Is anyone wishing to speak on items one, two, four, or five? See, no one. I will close the public hearing and may have a motion to approve the consent agenda. And Commissioner Rockwell?
I need to recuse myself from item number four.
All right. So noted. Is there any further discussion? Again, we have a motion and a second. All in favor. And that motion carries. The consent agenda is approved. Next, we'll move on to our one item for discussion, item six.
I think I did. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Beth Elliott, Paul Mogish will be presenting this item this evening. So, the item before us is the Comprehensive Plan Amendment for the Malcolm Yards area. I'll give a little bit of context for this discussion. So, the map shows the larger semi-southeast Minneapolis Industrial Employment District. That's in black. The area that we're looking at -- oh, I'm sorry. Yes, that is. So, it's almost 414 acres. The area that we're looking at is the area in red for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. It's at the southern edge of the southeast Minneapolis Industrial Employment District, as identified in the Minneapolis Plan for Sustainable Growth. So, this is just an aerial of the area. So, what we have here is, on the far south, you can see the University of Minnesota Transit Way, kind of in the left corner. You can see toward the upper part of the photo, you can see the rail yards and the rail corridors. And we also have the solid waste transfer station area here. So, this is a facility that the city uses for our solid waste. And so, we have a lot of trucks coming up and down Malcolm in order to get to that facility. So, the request we have in front of us is to remove nine acres from the semi-industrial employment district, as identified in our comprehensive plan. And let me just point out really quickly, you'll hear us talk about the fact that we're undergoing a comprehensive plan update right now per Met Council's requirements. Again, the comprehensive plan that we're working under is our existing comprehensive plan, the Minneapolis Plan for Sustainable Growth, in order to -- this is what is proposed to be updated. So, it's nine acres of 21 acres owned by Wall Development. The nine acres is in blue, and this is what's being proposed to be taken out of the industrial employment district. Just south of that, you have University Avenue. I'll show you a little bit more context as well. So, in purple, you have the semi-industrial employment district area. The blue is a representation in our future land use map for basically University of Minnesota properties. The blue represents public and institutional in our future land use map. You can see the stadium for the University of Minnesota. We are also just in the Prospect Park station area as well. And of course, the property that we're talking about is in red in the far corner. Again, this is a little closer. You can see the University of Minnesota Transit Way and the properties that we're talking about that are proposed to be taken out of the industrial employment district. So, here's some more detail on why we're actually -- this decision is before us. So, the request again is to take nine acres out of the industrial employment district. That is removing the boundary, so it doesn't include these nine acres, but it's also proposing to change the future land use designation from industrial to transitional industrial to allow more flexibility for -- assuming to allow more flexibility for future land uses on these nine acres. How comp plan amendments usually happen? There's two ways that they happen. We are in a unique position now because this is a developer-initiated comprehensive plan amendment. We have not seen one of these previously. The way the comprehensive plan usually is amended is it's initiated by the city related to the adoption of a small area plan or a topical plan or another policy document that it gets approved through you and the city council. And then, we go through the process of applying to the Metropolitan Council to amend that to our comprehensive plan. That's how it's happened over the last 10 years. This is, again, the first time that there's been a developer-initiated comprehensive plan amendment. There is an application that was created 10 years, like almost 10 years ago, with the update to our last comprehensive plan. It just hasn't been used up until this point. And I just want to point out that a comprehensive plan amendment is not about the development concept. It is about the specific request to change the comprehensive plan. So, it's not about short-term market. It's not about development concept. It's about the long-range vision in this area for whether that should be industrial or something besides industrial. So, right now, the industrial employment district is dedicated to industrial. And so, that's the question before us now. So, it's removing the boundary and also changing that future land use designation. So, it's not about what might happen on this site specifically. That's not the point of discussion today. What it's related to is whether this comp plan amendment is in the future interest of the city. So, Paul's going to mention more specifically about the development itself or the proposal itself.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Paul Mogish. I'm a planner in the Long Range Planning Division of CPED. Beth talked about some of the site context, what the request is, taking this property out of the industrial employment district and changing the underlying future land use guidance from industrial to transitional industrial. And she also mentioned the important fact that this is the first such request that we've received under this current comprehensive plan that was approved in 2009. So, it's an unfamiliar process to the Commission and frankly, to staff. So, what you're going to see, what you're going to hear from me now is something more than we would normally do for an item that we bring to the Commission related to a specific property or properties. I'm going to go into a little bit more detail about the analysis that we did based on the seven factors for consideration that are in that application for a comprehensive plan amendment that Beth referred to. So, the application asks applicants to make their case according to these seven factors. The applicant has done that in this case, and that's of course, in your packet in the application that the applicant submitted. And of course, we as staff have done the same thing, conducted an analysis based on those seven factors, and it's in the staff report. At the Committee of the Whole meeting a couple of weeks ago, we went through very broadly what our analysis is in terms of two categories, one being substantive and one the process concerns that we as staff have. Today, I'm going to go through each of those seven and explain the staff analysis and recommendation. So, the first factor for consideration for a comprehensive plan amendment application is the extent to which the change would be consistent with the comprehensive plan goals and policies. Now, at first read, this might seem a little silly. Well, isn't this an application to change those policies and change what's on the map? Well, this is about considering the request for this property or properties in the context of the whole plan, which covers the entire city and covers a wide range of topics. And the topic that's at hand today is that of industrial lands and how we deal with them in policy and regulation as a city. So, if you go back to the mid-2000s, there was, and we talked about it at the Committee of the Whole, for those of you who were there, this will be a little bit of a repeat, but not everybody was there, so I'm going to go over it again. We were in the midst of a mini-housing boom ahead of the recession. There was a lot of multifamily housing being built in the city, not in the order of what we're seeing today, not that much, but there was a lot happening. And some of that was happening in areas that had traditionally been industrial areas. And there was concern at the time about, well, aren't we going to lose -- we're starting to lose land that we need for jobs, and we need to sort that out. The second was, you know, as is always the case, the nature of industrial employment and employment in general was evolving, and we needed to take a step back as a city and take a look at that and how we deal with industrial lands and employment in the city. So, we set on the course of developing that policy through the industrial land use and employment policy plan. That was approved by the city council in 2006, and it set aside these areas for continued job growth into the future, and where housing would not be allowed. And that was carried forward, approved again by the city council in 2009, incorporated those boundaries of the industrial employment districts into the comprehensive plan, future land use map. And you know, all of you know that we in CPED are very prolific in planning. We do a lot of planning. These are the areas in gray where the comprehensive plan has small area plans amended into it. And a lot of those planning processes, those small area plans, geographically overlap with all or a portion of these industrial employment districts. And a lot of those have happened since the adoption of the industrial employment district in 2006 and again in 2009. And in every single one of those cases so far, those boundaries of the industrial employment districts have remained the same. Looking specifically at the semi, the southeast Minneapolis industrial area, which is the subject of this request, this is the boundary that was adopted in the industrial land use plan. Again, reaffirmed in the comprehensive plan. This is just zoomed in closer to the site. And then, one of those small area plans that I mentioned that overlaps with an industrial employment district is the University Avenue Stadium Village Plan, adopted by the city council just five years ago in 2012, and it again reaffirmed that boundary. Meanwhile, as Beth said, of course, the larger citywide comprehensive plan update is underway right now, and it is staff's contention that it's important to consider industrial land use policy for the entire city, not just in one area. The goals, policies, and geography associated with industrial lands in general and industrial employment in particular, of course, are part of this update effort and will be the subject and have been the subject of community engagement. So, we've been out, of course, talking with people in the community over the course of the last several months as part of this update. One of the things that we've heard consistently is that there are a lot of people in our city who really need jobs, they need better jobs, they need better-paying jobs, and it's a priority of this planning process to lay out a policy framework for making that happen. And this ties very closely to the six values that the council has adopted for the comprehensive plan, chief among them equity and racial equity in particular, especially in the face of persistent employment gaps between white people and people of color. Okay. So, number one, the staff analysis is that the proposed change would not be consistent with the existing comprehensive plan goals and policies and would be premature, given the critical conversation and analysis are currently underway regarding employment and employment disparities as part of the citywide comprehensive plan update. The second factor for consideration, evidence demonstrating the reason or reasons that the plan should be changed, including but not limited to whether new information has become available since the comprehensive plan was adopted, that supports reexamination of the plan, or that existing or proposed developments offer new opportunities or constraints that were not previously considered. Now, as I said, it's only been five years since the council last reaffirmed the boundary of the semi-industrial employment district through the Small Area Plan, the Stadium Village Small Area Plan. Now, since that time, just in the last year or so, CPED has commissioned a study of the city's industrial building stock to assess its suitability for key industrial sectors. CPED staff is using this information to inform draft changes to industrial land use policy citywide as part of Minneapolis 2040, the comp plan update process that is currently underway. So, this is among the new information that staff will be using to tee up this question of industrial lands, industrial buildings, industrial employment citywide. So, we are bringing new information into the larger process. Staff analysis on this consideration is that it is premature to amend the comprehensive plan for a specific property while the citywide comp plan update is underway. The third consideration, whether or not the change is needed to allow reasonable development of the site. Okay. So, I'm going to read from the staff report. Please forgive me, but this is what the staff report says on this. Reasonable development is allowed under the current land use policy and with the existing zoning classifications for the subject properties. The existing zoning of I-2 is consistent with the policies associated with an industrial employment district, allowing a wide range of industrial uses in addition to office and limited commercial. So, there's essentially saying there's a bunch of stuff you can do there. Now, this is what we said on the staff report, and we stand by it, but there's more to this. It's clear that looking long-term to say 2040, to pick a year, we need to be planning for the industries of the future, or at the very least, the present. So, the way the city's policies and regulations handle industrial uses today may not be exactly right for the long-term future. And we're being pushed, we as staff, we as a department, and we as a city are being pushed to think differently about industrial land uses, and rightly so. This push is coming from a number of directions. So, in your packet, you probably read the MOU between Prospect Park and the property owner. It's all about working toward a more positive future for the area, working together, and a part of that is thinking more creatively about what to do with industrial land. The same thing is true for the Innovation District that the city council approved a couple of years ago for this area. It specifically directs staff to, quote, "consider changes to city policies and practices that allow for experimentation and innovation," unquote. And that's what we're doing right now in the comprehensive plan update, is considering all of those things for the whole city. And I want to be clear about something. This request is to move the boundary of the district and change the underlying future land use. If that were to happen, it would be in the context of the existing comp plan and set of zoning regulations, which doesn't have all this new innovative stuff in it. It doesn't by itself introduce new policy and regulatory tools to use on either side of that boundary. So, that means that for the time being, if it were to happen, we'd be left with whatever the consequences are of moving that boundary under the existing set of policies and tools that we have in the comp plan and the zoning code. So, among other things, that would mean allowing housing closer and closer to the rail yard that Beth was showing, to the SKB Environmental, the solid waste transfer station, and so on. So, it's a long way of saying, the proposed change is not needed to allow reasonable development of the site. The fourth consideration is the relationship with the proposed amendment to the supply and demand for particular land uses within the city and the immediate vicinity of the site. All right. So, here's our city. It is 54 square miles. And in these two shades of purple are the places where the city council has chosen to protect industrial lands for future employment growth. This is about 7% of the city's surface area in total. Actually, these are the areas, rather. So, what we see here is, in the dark purple are the industrial employment districts. In the lighter shade of purple are what's called transitional industrial. They are areas where, at the time that the comp plan was adopted in 2009, existing industrial zoning and land uses existed, but the policy going forward is that they could, they may, transition to something other than industrial. So, this is what we're left with, assuming all of those do transition to something else. This represents 7% of the city's surface area. Now, we're expecting 33,000 new jobs between now and 2040, excuse me, according to Met Council projections. And these are the only areas we have left for industrial employment or whatever industrial employment becomes in the future. Sure, some job growth will happen downtown, as it should, and in other parts of the city, but there are certain industries that are really only appropriate in these industrial areas that we have set aside, and it's important that we have that full array of possibilities for employment for our residents. So, staff analysis on this factor is that the supply and demand for industrial land uses is a citywide issue that is being addressed in the update to the comp plan, which is currently underway. The proposed change for the subject properties is premature, given the citywide analysis that we're doing. Five, a demonstration that the proposed amendment has merit beyond the interests of the applicant. So, certainly redevelopment of these properties is in the interest of both the city and the applicant, generally speaking. These are underutilized properties that, when redeveloped, will do lots of good things. They'll add activity to the transit station area, employment activity for the transit station area, employment for our residents, and tax base to improve the city's fiscal well-being. It's our contention as staff that this can all occur under the existing policy framework for the industrial employment district and the existing zoning. As I said before, we hope to have new, we will have new innovations in the policies and regulations in the future, but for the time being, these opportunities exist under the current framework. Under the policies of the current comprehensive plan, which has been reaffirmed multiple times, it is not in the city's interest for redevelopment of this plan to be used for uses other than industrial or office. Number six is about the possible impacts of the amendment on a long list of elements that really get to the metropolitan systems that the Metropolitan Council is responsible for under statute. And if we were to submit an application to the Metropolitan Council to amend the comprehensive plan related to this property, there would be some analysis that would need to be done regarding these systems. Now, I do want to say about, a couple of things about that. Both the subject properties that we're talking about here in the larger semi-industrial area that require substantial investments in transportation and other infrastructure, this is well documented through the many, many plans that have been done in this area over the last couple of decades. And those needs will remain regardless of where that line is on the map. So, these are issues that we as a city know we need to tackle in the years to come, and many of them have been tackled to date. And finally, okay, so the finding is additional analysis might be necessary to assess the possible impacts on metropolitan systems. It's also importantly, has not yet been determined whether an environmental assessment might be necessary for the Metropolitan Council to consider a comprehensive plan amendment. And finally, consideration of the impact of the proposed amendment upon current and future special assessments and utility area charges, future property tax assessment, or other fiscal impacts on the city of Minneapolis. This is not an argument that we are hanging our hat on. Staff is not aware of any adverse impacts related to those considerations. So, in closing, just to bring it back to the two, boil it down to the two concerns that we as staff have about this request. One is the substantive, preserving land for industrial development or for industrial employment, however imperfectly defined today in the comp plan, is critical to meeting the employment needs of our residents over the long term. And two, the process concern, the issue of industrial employment really needs to be considered at the citywide level, and it is through the comp plan update process that is currently underway. So, I will leave it at that, and Beth and I will be happy to answer any questions from the Commission.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions of staff? Commissioner Rockwell, then Commissioner Wheezy?
Two quick questions. One is, what was the last time this area was last used for active industrial, and what were those uses? Why did those end? And then, what policies do, well, not what policies, what other tools is the city using to try to encourage industrial employment here? So, we've got this zoning district, but do we have money on the table? Do we have, what else is going on?
Commissioner Rockwell, for the second question, I'll ask David Frank, the Economic Development Director, to come forward if you wouldn't mind. The first question regarding the history of the site, David might have some insights into that. I'm sure that will be talked about when the applicant comes forward. It might be a good time to ask that.
Commissioners, Commissioner Rockwell, as I understand your question, it's what is the city doing to help in this area right now?
Right. I mean, yeah, the basis of my question is wondering if we're putting a stringent land use regulation on the site, what are we doing to help people meet the requirements of that land use besides just putting a requirements of that land use besides just putting an overlay down?
Understood. Thank you. So, for starters, I will say, this, we believe this is a very attractive area for development. I see some colleagues in the audience, I'm sure, will testify that the public has invested a great deal of money in the form of the light rail system. It has a tremendous location near both downtown Minneapolis, downtown St. Paul, it's in the middle, it's surrounded by attractive neighborhoods. So, there's infrastructure investment. We're about to make additional infrastructure investments south of the transit way. North of the transit way has been a much more hands-off. We've worked with businesses who want to locate in the area. We have worked with this developer somewhat, and other developers too, to help them locate businesses there and locate employment there, but we do not, if this is your question, we do not have a specific financing program that says, if you develop this site in this location only, we have this program for you. The council, as was mentioned, passed an Innovation District Resolution, recognizing this is the city's first innovation district, so, you know, our door is open to think about creative things to do, and we're always trying to find creative things to do, but I hope that's generally responsive to your question.
Sure. Thank you.
Commissioner Sweetsie.
Yeah, I'm wondering, the, this method of amending the comprehensive plan, why was it created? That creates an avenue for a private party to come in?
Commissioner Sweetsie, that's a good question. At the time that we were updating the comprehensive plan last time, leading up to the 2009 adoption of Minneapolis Plan for Sustainable Growth, one of the new features of that comprehensive plan that we are operating under now, it was a parcel-specific future land use map, where every parcel in the city has a future land use designation. That was not the case in the plan that preceded that. And a second important difference is that there were more boundaries drawn, or policy boundaries drawn, like the industrial employment districts, whereas in that example, before the industrial employment districts, there were dots on the map that said, you know, generally where we want industrial jobs, but where there weren't specific boundaries. So, we felt it was important to at least offer that opportunity for applicants to propose changing those boundaries and changing those parcel-specific designations.
Mr. Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Some of my questions were answered. I guess, one I would like to ask is more about the infrastructure investment.